Mayor Matt Girding called the June 16th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Summersworth to order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin.
Yeah.
Vincent.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Parry Catanzaro.
Here.
Mishu.
Yeah.
Witham.
Here.
Goodwin.
Excused.
Cameron.
Yeah.
Barry.
Here.
All right, City Manager Bellmore, will you please lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous peoples, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alderbach, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have four public hearings scheduled for this evening. First up, we have a public hearing on ordinance 19-25, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 19.24 accessory dwelling units and Section 25 definitions, Section Z point D dwelling units accessory. Ordinance 19-25 was amended at our last meeting and requires tonight's public hearing due to its amendment. Is there anyone here this evening wishing to speak towards ordinance 19-25? Anyone wishing to speak towards ordinance 19-25? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 19-25. Next up, we have a public hearing on ordinance 26-25, which is to amend Chapter 4 Personnel Rules and Regulations Appendix, excuse me, Appendix 2 Compensation Schedule. Is there anyone here this evening looking to speak towards ordinance 16, oh no, sorry, Anyone looking to speak towards ordinance 26-25? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 26-25. Next up, we have a public hearing on ordinance 27-25, which is Transfer Between Departments for Fiscal Year 2425. Is there anyone here this evening looking to speak toward ordinance 27-25? Or ordinance 27-25? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 27-25. Lastly, we have a public hearing on the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program Application, which is City Ordinance Chapter 31, from Devin Powell of Nostus MMA Gym for the redevelopment project at One Summersworth Plaza, which is the former Lucky Supermarket. Is there anyone here this evening to speak towards this application? Anyone here? Yes, if you are, please come on up to the microphone right here, state your name and where you live.
Name and where it lives.
Yes, please, yeah, just for the record.
Hello, is that close enough?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. My name is Devin Powell, I live at 41 Lake Drive in Wells. And yeah, I operate Nostus MMA with my wife Carolyn. We've operated for 11 years now. We have over 300 students. We sponsor all the schools, not just Summersworth, but all like the Berwick School Systems. We do like a free month for any child that comes in that's being bullied. We try to have, like, we bring in like the UNH school to come in to do their like charge program, where they like bring in like 80 females to learn self-defense. We've been dying for more space, not having as many issues with parking. We have a lot of students that we lose because of like the parking in the morning where they get ticketed and, you know, people get frustrated on just even having to park there, they get nervous coming into a new spot. But the new space can be twice as big with parking, and even without the parking lot, the all-day parking that runs along that road, it's untouched almost all the time, and our students would have no problem. Currently, you know, we have over 300 students, and I would imagine that will double really quickly. And yeah, we just, we don't want to go anywhere else. We've developed our business here, and we love where we're at. We've been year after year hoping something would come up that would be in walking distance, so none of our students we would lose. We've been fighting to stay here, doing everything we could to maximize our facility, you know, training upstairs, downstairs. We've put countless dollars into that facility for another person, and we think it's time that we own something that's our own and go forward and bring like the best martial arts facility to the entire Northeast. We have so many champion MMAs, students at our gym, kids that are gonna get into the UFC like what I did, and they're just gonna go further than me, and they have so many, the kids have so many role models at our facility, and just hard-working people, and it's just a great spot for people that need an outlet after they get out of work, don't have something to do, they want camaraderie. We're also part of the WE Defi Foundation, which pays for the membership for anybody that's military, that needs an outlet, just positive friendship, that camaraderie, like I was saying, prior. WE Defi Foundation's a really big thing that we have in our academy, so yeah, that's a little bit, I love that, it's good, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak towards this application as well? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program Application. That brings us to item five, which is comments by visitors. The Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Yes, please come on up and speak and state your name and where you live.
Don Barrios, 117 High Street, and looking forward to you to being my neighbor. I really want that to go through, that wasn't part of what I started, but, so I want to talk about the plaza, about the workshop last week that I didn't get to say anything about. First thing is, why did the decay of the plaza happen? When in the beginning, there were many great stores to go to, Cutter's Jewelers, Nutters Pharmacy, A&amp;P, Spellman Shoe, The Liquor Store, and a few others. Well, what happened in the 80s and 90s, Prime Tanning, Robert Shoe, Summersworth Shoe, and the Bleachery Left, GE did a major downsizing, which left our downtown businesses with no customer base. Also at that time, Walmart opened, and our downtime died, and we still haven't recovered. In about 2000, the city decided to put a facelift on the plaza. And what a facelift, the plaza looked great. Bob, you were there. But 25 years later, City Hall complains, "It looks awful," you say. Well, 25 years, well, in 25 years, the city did, as far as I know, one thing, that palace washed the facade once, and that was it. So the true cause of why the plaza looks awful is because of every City Hall member, and I'm sorry, some of you guys are my friends, since 2000 to today. Why should I have to pay for your neglect? Also, you say it costs money to remove snow from the parking lot, that is true, but it also costs the city money to plow and remove snow from every other parking spot in this town, so I look at that as a wash. Now let's get to the statement of last week of the plaza having no value, which was said Monday night, which was a huge insult to all of us here. Let's see, the laundromat, constantly busy, with customers who can't wash his clothes at homes, that is value. The Chinese restaurant provides food to customers, that is value. We have a fitness center almost ready to open, that is value. Nostros wants to move there. Let's see, where, that is a growing downtown business, that is value. My store provides fun and so much more to thousands every year, from all over, that is value. Because you don't care for what is provided here doesn't mean there is no value. When urban renewal happened, many people were removed from their homes. My grandparents and my mother were one of them. They purchased a house on 34 Rocky Hill Road and lived a great life there in that part of the city. Would you not agree, Counselor Peppin? In a sense, I have returned home. My mother, my grandmother, and grandfather live there, so I'm kind of at home with my business. If urban renewal never happened, I hear you all say how you miss the beautiful buildings. Well, that was over 60 years ago now, and most likely would be property that a family over there would own, or maybe an absentee landlord, and we can only imagine what that would look like today. Now let's get to me a little bit. I donate to youth hockey at the Lions Club, I sponsor teams, the Little League, and I donate to them. I have given to many other organizations in this city and surrounding areas. I've been open 25 years here in downtown, and I plan to be open for another seven to 10 years, maybe even longer. My customers make it a joy to be there seven days a week. I virtually work seven days a week, 365 days a year. I may take a day off here and there, so let's look at my personal future of cash growth. Let's say I stay open another seven years, well, I sell about $600,000 a year. That is $4.2 million, and as long as I make money, I want to expand, and who knows what I would expand into? But I would. Now, with that said, there's no amount of money you could ever offer me if you guys did eminent domain. I'm in business of creating happy faces, and many of my customers turn into my friends. I built this business that I wish I could go to, because I've been, so many businesses that are not friendly in my field. How can we resolve this? The city could work with the plaza businesses to maybe purchase the parking lot or the facade. Now, let's see, make sure I didn't mess up here. The city could work with the plaza businesses to either, oh, sorry, that's repeating, the city could use tax money that we all pay to actually pave over there and maybe paint. We could start a committee or commission with owners and the city. In my closing, the plaza and the parking lot is a diamond in the rough. We can find an answer that works for everyone if we use teamwork, not bullying politics. I recommend to you, City Hall, go home and never do anything to your house for the next 25 years and see what it looks like. And I want to thank two counselors that reached out to me, because this is very important. This is my life, and I'm a living the American dream. If those counselors want to reveal themselves, that's fine, but I will not use their names. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any other public comments this evening? What comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Six, which is approval of the consent calendar. The Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the City Council meeting held on June 2nd, 2025. Do I have a motion? Counselor Gibson?
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Counselor Gibson, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say you moved to approve the consent calendar as presented, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Question for the council is the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, I have it, consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to Item Seven, which is comments by city counselors. Are there any comments by counselors this evening? Counselor Witham?
Thank you. I just want to respond for the benefit of constituents that are either here or at home that reached out to me regarding the plan for Seton Academy, a private religious school, to move into what was once the Pinewood Medical Center on Route 108. It's on the corner of Pinewood Drive and Route 108. That facility has been for sale for a number of months, and a couple of things about this are important to share with the public at home, and for those that called me and spoke with me. So, I think the first indication that this was happening was when Seton Academy placed a banner over the Pinewood Medical sign at the end of the road that alerted the residents on Pinewood Drive that this was happening. They also put in a number of, I'll call them yard signs, along the front of the property. This alerted the residents of the area, frankly alerted me that this was going to occur. And before I even had an opportunity to reach out to city staff to inquire about planning board approval, because it seemed to be a rather dramatic reuse of the property, I was contacted by residents who had concerns about traffic, noise, and other things that are typically vetted by the planning board. I learned after a discussion with city staff that the state of New Hampshire enacted legislation about 18 months ago, so relatively recent, that does not allow for planning board oversight of religious institutions, apparently including religious schools, provided they are not expanding beyond the footprint of an existing building. Apparently, the plan of Seton Academy is to work strictly within the confines of the building. If my understanding is correct, if they were to put an addition on, or if they were to put another story on, basically expand the square footage, then it would trigger site plan review by the planning board, but it does not. So, the Seton Academy Board of Directors are correct that they don't need site plan approval. However, I would argue that simply placing the sign and just marching forward with their plan without involving the neighbors was not the right thing to do. So, they were right, but they weren't right. So, and the right I'm talking about is their approach to occupying that building. I think they would have been far better off, and I guess I'm providing advice to Seton Academy, to have suggested that prior to them erecting signs and causing alarm, if you will, that they would have reached out to the abutters, and in particular, that neighborhood, and engaged them in a conversation around what traffic is gonna look like, and all of those sorts of things. Quite frankly, it is quite possible, there's a large parking lot with an access drive that goes around the building, that pickup and drop-off may be uneventful, but it would have been nice to know that before public alarm is raised about this, and again, no site plan approval required through the planning board. So, it appears what they're doing is legal, again, I just, I don't agree with their approach. The other thing that this triggers is a conversation with constituents around property taxes here in the city of Summersworth, right? And unfortunately, that's driven by our sort of tax structure here in New Hampshire, which is such a heavy reliance on property taxes. I've spoken many times that that system is broke. The mayor just wrote a fantastic article, which was published in Foster's, an editorial, about our property tax system here in the state is on the precipice of disaster, quite frankly. It hasn't worked for a long time, and it's not working particularly well at the moment. We are in a dire time in terms of our ability to tax. What's interesting is with such a heavy reliance on property taxes, and it's interesting some of the comments about urban renewal and Walmart and all of that, why is the city so anxious to attract businesses like a Walmart, or to put a medical office on Route 108? It's because that generates property taxes to help fund the needs of the city. There is such a heavy reliance on that, that we oftentimes maybe do things that aren't in the best interest of our community because of this reliance on property tax. It forces our hand. Well, in this particular case, as we think about the Route 108 corridor and the original intent to develop that as a medical mile and all of that, these are some of the higher-valued properties in the city of Summersworth. So, Seton Academy is a nonprofit religious institution, so that property, which has a value well into the millions of dollars, is gonna have a pretty big impact on our taxable property here in the city of Summersworth. So, and again, what they're doing is legal, I'm just stating a fact that it's gonna create some level of angst for us come budget time, because we have that much less property value to tax here in the city, and again, based upon the high value of the properties out there. And state of New Hampshire doesn't allow us to do much of anything about this, and again, there are some that are running for state office that would suggest they want more local control. Well, the state is not doing that, in fact, they're taking away local control left and right, and that's concerning. What's even more concerning about this is that with education freedom accounts and our need to fund those from the local level, we have an institution going in on Route 108, which is now not gonna be taxable, so less taxable money here for the city, but we're gonna have to spend money to help support maybe some of the children that go to that school. It's like a double whammy, and it doesn't sit well with me, but there's nothing about it that's illegal. Again, they may be right, but the whole situation is not right if you're following my logic here. And again, I just wish that this was more open and transparent prior to Seton Academy throwing a banner sign on Route 108. That ship has sailed, we have no control over it, but it is sort of a frustrating moment in terms of my tenure here on council. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Vincent and Counselor Parry Catanzaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna take off, or start off where you left off, Counselor Witham, but first, I'm gonna say to Mr. Barrios, you couldn't have said it better. Thank you so very much. I happen to be one of the people that reached out to you, because I was concerned, and at that meeting, I said I would not take eminent domain or vote for anything like that. And at the next meeting that I don't believe that you were at was a Public Works meeting, and I want, I made some direction towards the committee to start getting that squared away. So, thank you very much, I appreciate, I applaud you, thank you. Let's talk about Seton Academy. So I had several constituents in Pine Wood Drive reach out to me, and their concerns was traffic. We've all gone by public schools and private schools, there's St. Mary's in Dover, and if you've gone by, you've seen the amount of traffic that this generates. Now, this school is gonna have about 90 to 100 kids, that's right now. The school can grow. So the line of traffic that comes out, I'm just thinking like, is it gonna come out and go up and run down 108? Is it gonna go into Pine Wood Drive, and they're gonna be parking for 100 yards maybe, of what cars would be in front of these residents? And by the way, that happens twice a day, so I was very, very concerned with it. So, I reached out to Packy Campbell, who happens to be the Vice President. I think he is a known property owner in the city. He's come before the city, owns property here, I think he owns, he actually owns the building right next to Hilltop Fireworks, which I own, which is the car wash, the storage facility down, and several other properties. And I reached out with him with concerns of this, and he guaranteed me that it would not pose a problem, because in the morning, the kids are gonna go to church and then be bussed to the school. And that's all fine and dandy, but then again, there's 2 o'clock, 2:30, 3 o'clock, release, whatever it may be. In this conversation, I asked if the school, Seton Academy, was going to actually donate any type of yearly donation to the city. They're going to be tax exempt, and when I had that conversation, it seemed like the conversation turned a little bit. Now, am I talking behind his back? No, I'm not, because I'm a guy who basically tell you how it is. I try to have a tact sometimes, but it gets the best of me, but you know, as this counselor, I'm gonna tell you, you might not like it, but I'm not talking behind his back. And I asked him if they were gonna make a donation once a year, and he said this, he said, "Yeah, I'll take a donation from the city." And I said, "No, no, no, I mean, are you gonna donate to the city?" Says, "I'll take a donation from the city, because Hampton donates." And I right away said, "Hampton? Hampton's a whole different story than Summersworth. They got a lot more property value, and they got more tax intake." So I had, I had heartburn with that, because nonprofit, let's talk about nonprofit. Nonprofit is a president, a vice president, a secretary, the members that work for it, the employees. Nonprofit is, can take and give the people who are part of the members, what? Maybe they collect $100,000? Maybe there's money in the end, because in a nonprofit, you're not supposed to carry money. And I'm not saying I know all the rules for nonprofit, all I know, I've been involved with nonprofit through the Lions Club and so forth, and I just, I think that things can happen, so there probably would be a surplus of money. Maybe there wouldn't be, but my point to him was that, maybe you should donate back to the city. Matter of fact, maybe everybody should, people that own homes, maybe they can't afford it, I understand it, but maybe they could go out and pick up trash. That's what makes this city better, by the people who live here and put into the city. You get back what you put into the city. My business gives a lot of money to this city, and I get out and do my efforts, and I understand that, like I said, not everybody can do that. But I'm gonna use a nonprofit example. We have municipal insurance that's nonprofit here, and one of our counselors worked for them. You know what? They give back. If there's no injuries, or there's a surplus of money, they give checks back. I know this because I was a firefighter in the city, and I got a check back from them. So even they're giving back. So, I just don't like it. It became sneaky, and sometimes I just, as I was talking to him, you know, I really don't think he gave a darn about the city. I'm sorry, I'm willing to have the phone call tonight from him, I just don't think he cared. And that reminds me of non, that reminds me of absentee landlords that come in the city and don't pick their property up, and we get, we're left picking up the mess. So I'd encourage that organization to give a little bit back to us, please. We're not Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Parry Catanzaro.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say I'm very excited for the business going in, is it Nostus? Nostros. Going into the plaza, we are all very excited. You may have heard your ears ringing when we were talking about you all in the workshop. It's really exciting to see businesses start and grow here, and I just, I think the Community Tax Relief Incentive Program is designed for exactly this. You're starting, you're putting a lot of investment into the space, and you're growing, and so therefore, we can give you a little bit of a break, not even a permanent break like some nonprofits get, but a little bit of a break at least for a few years, so I'm really excited about that. And Dawn, thank you so much for coming and sharing those words, I also could not agree with you more. It's just really, really unfortunate what was said here last week, and regardless of intent, which I'm sure was not malicious, people shouldn't be, you know, saying that businesses have no value. I stopped by over the weekend and was just totally blown away by how many people were in that store. If folks don't know, there's pinball machines. I don't know how I didn't know that, I haven't been in there since those pinball machines got put in there, but just really, really fun, people stopping by, asking about the events, talking about what a great store it was, I mean, it was awesome, I bought a couple of records, there's records there too. Just a really, really cool spot, I know you've been there for, or been open for 25 years, I don't know if in that same location, but our conversation at the workshop, hopefully, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself, but I think what I heard from the rest is that I'm certainly not in favor of eminent domain taking over the plaza. I think a lot of us are really interested in creative solutions that does not displace anybody in there, but that does build trust with the businesses and invest in that space, in the parking lot, in the facade, I think Counselor Vincent was talking about it, and Counselor Witham, just, you know, if we own that space, we should be taking care of it better, and if there's a future step, like you mentioned, you know, the city working with you to help the businesses in there sort of collectively enter into some sort of shared ownership, that would be awesome. I would encourage the mayor to think about some sort of commission or group like that that would include the businesses, because I think that would be really great, there's no better expert on that spot than people that have been there for a really long time. But it was just very cool to go there on a Sunday, I think it was, and it just was A lot of people in there, that, it was really, really cool to see. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's it. Yeah. Commission. So, all right, that's all.
Thank you. Other comments by councilors? Yes, Councilor Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. Unfortunately, I had to leave that meeting early to go back to work. But I think I had made it perfectly clear as well that I was not in favor of the eminent domain. And I was one that had reached out to you as well. And I know my son has been going to your store. Every time he comes to town to visit me or what have you, and I remember way back when, when you've been there for so long, and you definitely described what value means over there. And I am looking forward to your organization going in next door to the old Lucky's. I think that's going to be wonderful for your business and a great move and a great kickoff to kind of what we're looking for into this downtown area. So, that's wonderful to hear. I also was contacted by some of the residents on Pinewood, and I kind of agree what was already said. And I was just a little disappointed that the academy had not reached out to the abuddies in that area and for the kind of wave of creation that they're creating right now over there and getting the residents all kind of in an uproar. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by councilors? Councilor Gibson?
Yeah, I just want to state my agreement with what the previous councilors have said about the academy and especially about the tax issue that goes along with it. The state has continually downshifted responsibility onto the communities without addressing the cost of those responsibilities. We have an archaic tax structure in this state. The funny thing is, I watched a movie last night. It was called Irresistible. And it's basically about the stupidity of the national parties and money in politics. And the sad thing to me is, I look at the state of New Hampshire and I see the same thing, because for whatever reason, a large percentage of the people running for elective office in this state, I don't want to call them cowards, but I'm assuming they're reasonably intelligent people and know that the communities are reaching a breaking point. The well-off communities can deal with this, but the communities that are not in that upper tier of taxable property are going to eventually be facing a situation where they're going to become ghost towns, because people can't afford to live in them. Prime example, our last reassessment. Don't disagree with evaluations. I know that the market is the market, and that's what's going on. But my property tax doubled on that assessment. I can pay it, but I know there are people living in Sherwood Glen, right along beside me, that that is going to be a tough road to hoe. And again, I don't fault anybody. It's the reality. But if the state doesn't start facing realities, you're either going to be, like I said, a ghost town, or it's going to become a playground for people with money, because nobody else will be able to afford to live here. And I don't really see many wealthy people that want to establish residency in Somersworth. No offense to the city when I say that, but, you know, it's a mess, and nobody seems to be willing to face it and deal with it. That's my two bits.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Other comments by councilors? Councilor Barry?
I'm not going to repeat a lot of what we've already heard here. I, thank you for Toys in the Attic coming and talking. We did have that whole conversation. I'm excited about Nostros, if I hopefully said that right, coming to the plaza. I think one thing I said at the workshop is that unfortunately, part of our downtown is dying. We get some great businesses in, but then they can only make it for so long, because we're not driving other people to come down there and find them. Like, stop in, go see these new businesses that open, and eventually, they just can't make it anymore. So, I'm hoping that this will help with that, a new business down there, bringing people down, making other businesses go, "Oh, there's traffic down there. Let's get other things down there." So, I'm hopeful as part of that, again, workshop, bringing other things down there, because that's a very big parking lot to walk across with nothing really to get, except for on one side. There's a very big gap if you're on the sidewalk, and they don't realize other things are there. So, I think, I'm hopeful that this will help bring more businesses or development to that area, so we can start helping our businesses that are there or that are coming there and have them stay and be thriving. So, that was it.
Thank you. Other comments by councilors? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, which is Communications. We have none. Item 9, which is Presentations of Petitions and Disposal thereof by reference or otherwise, we have none. Brings us to Item 10, which is the mayor's report. I would like to give a heartfelt congratulations and thank you this evening to our city manager, Bob Bellmore. For those of us who are watching here tonight or watching at home, tonight is Mr. Bellmore's last meeting as our Somersworth city manager, before he does retire. He's not leaving us for another city. He's retiring. But in his over 20 years here in Somersworth, he has successfully spearheaded numerous city projects that have vastly improved our city, its people, and the infrastructure within it, including, but not limited to, development of a brand-new police station, a brand-new fire station, Idlehurst School, major improvements to our wastewater treatment center, our water treatment centers, major improvements to our Somersworth downtown with the downtown revitalization project, numerous road and sidewalk improvements beyond that. He's helped the city weather an economic downturn and recessions, as well as a global pandemic, which no one saw coming. He's overseen the economic development and the growth of our city, the creation of numerous businesses, housing here in the city, and has helped to steer the ship to create a city that is not only fiscally stable, but I would say is thriving. This list of achievements that I've listed so far is small and certainly incomplete compared to the many other numerous accomplishments that he has under his belt. And to list them all would take me all night. I really cannot begin to express how lucky we were as a city to have had you at the helm for the past 20 years. So, thank you. Nothing I can say, certainly no compensation, no gift or accolades will ever be enough to thank you for your dedication to the city of Somersworth. Public service is a thankless field to be in. I think all of us sitting up here know that, but maybe not everyone at home does. It's one fraught with certainly many phone calls and emails from potentially upset residents about taxes and potholes, probably more of those than the ones thanking you for the infinite number of times and ways that you've changed the community for better. So, I hope that at least these thanks tonight can fill some of those gaps. Please know that I, this council, and this city are forever grateful for the time and energy that you have sacrificed to the city of Somersworth. Now, Manager Bellmore, I know you did not want any sort of recognition. I promise. Yeah. I promise I didn't write a proclamation. I definitely did not order you a chair, though I was tempted many a time and thought it would still be funny. But I figured my, you know, senses came to me. But I felt that we couldn't let today pass with at least some sort of acknowledgement of your service. So, we do have a small token of our appreciation. We're happy to present you this, this evening. You can either open it now or not. I'll leave that to your discretion. But please know that, as I stated earlier, this really, truly is an amazing tenure that you've had. There is no way that we could thank you for everything that you've done. But, you know, I did try. But I hope you enjoy retirement to the fullest. I really hope that you have as many sunny days on the beach, the golf course, and the slopes as you have had maybe difficult ones dealing with all of us. So, thank you.
Could we piggyback on that a little bit, Your Honor?
Yeah, absolutely. Go, we'll go around. Go ahead. We'll start over here.
So, I'm coming up on the end of 15 years on council, a few more years added to that on planning board. So, I've worked alongside Manager Bellmore, Bob, for, for quite a while now. He has certainly championed many a project that, quite frankly, a bullish city council has pushed forward. We've been aggressive in terms of infrastructure and redevelopment, and there were perhaps some meetings where he said, "I wonder if we can do all of this," but he never said that. He said, "Sure," and he went about getting it done. A lot of long hours. Our meetings are typically not short. I did tell Chief Sunderland that we'd be done by 8:15 tonight. I think that's a big fat lie. So, I apologize in advance there. And I apologize to Manager Bellmore for the many long meetings that I contributed to, maybe this one as well. So, we're not changing a whole lot tonight. Always available even on the weekends. Every now and again, a constituent issue would crop up on the weekends that warranted some sort of immediate action, and Bob was a phone call or a text away. Worked many a long hour. If you drove by here, even on a Saturday, sometimes you saw his car parked lonely in the parking lot as he was working away on a capital improvement plan or the budget or something of that nature. And I don't think residents really appreciate the, the hours that a position of yours requires and the dedication, and it's been exceptional, Bob. So, thank you for that. Every now and again, we did have a little bit of fun. We would occasionally go and golf together. We did just a few weeks ago. I can honestly say that all of the times we went golfing, I was sure to let you win. Those balls that I hit off in the woods or in the water, that was intentional. So, I, I hope we can still golf, and I'm going to kick your butt now, because I, I had to let you win all those years. And even on occasion, we went skiing. So, there was this one time, we're at Gunstock, and we get off the lift, and I actually snowboard, he skis, and we get off the lift, and I went down the hill, because I have to get out, a little outrun before I can put my binding on. And I'm like, "What happened to Bob?" And I looked back at where you get off the lift, and there's Bob, and he had fallen. And he was upside down, and if you can imagine like a turtle on its back, it sort of looked like that. And he, he couldn't get up. And the lift attendant in the little hut at the top there had to stop the lift. There was a big fuss, there's an alarm that goes off, and the lift attendant had to come out. The lift attendant apparently was like on light duty, because he had the crutch. And he had to come out and help Bob get back up on his ski, so. But I always enjoyed skiing with you, because there was always some humor in it. But, so, I could go on. I have a lot of those Bob stories, but we don't have enough time. I want to keep the meeting to less than 10:00 tonight for the chief over there. So, Bob, thank you for everything you've provided to the city. You, you've done exceptional work. You've been a lot of fun to be around and certainly can call you a friend. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for all your years of dedication to the city. You've, like Councilor Witherman said, you've always been there when we needed you, by text or by phone, weekend night, whenever. I haven't had as many years with you as some of the others, but you've always been very attentive to my questions, and I appreciate that. You're going to be tough shoes to fill. Keep sending me those lighthouse pictures.
Thank you.
I'm the newest member of this board, so I didn't get to bug you as much as most of those on here, but hopefully, I was memorable when I did. I just want to say thank you so much for all your service you've done here, but I'm actually looking forward to seeing you in the audience, because I have a feeling we have not heard the last from you, and I hope not. So, I look forward to that side.
Thank you. Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, Bob, you're going to be missed really deeply. I'm going to miss somebody to spout off to, because sometimes my blood pressure's been pretty high when I've gone into his office about certain things that's happened here. And he's, always seems to find a way to cool me down a little bit. So, I deeply appreciate that. So, and I'd just like to comment, I don't think people realize how much information he does give to the city council. There is not a meeting up here that we don't come from, that he hasn't given us the information and the stuff prepared for us ahead of time. And with all the meetings in between you, Scott, and Brenda, you're all going to be deeply missed. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I've been around the city. I've worked, starting in '83, at the fire department. And in the '90s, you came on board as, I don't know if you were economic development or not, but all I know is I didn't even like you. I, I thought you were some arrogant, you know, micromanager, you know? It's like, who is this guy? Now, he's our city manager? I'm like, what? Really? And then, I realized it, because I became an officer and a manager. And I realized, you know, especially when I got out of the fire service and cut over here, that being a supervisor, a boss, or a manager is, is tough. You know, some of the better bosses that I had in my life, where they worked, they had no friends, because they had to do their job. And what made the difference was, when the job was done, then it was friends, because that's the way it is, you know? I could pick the phone up for the nine years I've been doing this and ask that man, "Can we do something about it?" And if we couldn't, it was the next day it was done, if it was possible. It was a phone call, or an email, or a text. It didn't matter what time it was. Loyal. Thank you. Thank you very much. And you know that our relationship has grown, and I definitely consider you a friend. And I'm going to miss you, man. You did us good. You did us good. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
My history with the city manager kind of started like Mr. Counselor Vincent's did. I owned rental property in the city and didn't always agree with everything that was going on. But the one thing that I've learned over time is, and I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said, but a loyal, no more dedicated individual to the city of Somersworth than the time that he's been here, in Bob Bellmore. Thank you for everything that you've done for the city and the residents over that period of time. And best wishes to you. And I don't blame you if you sit in the audience and throw it back at us a little bit. After all, you had to sit through. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, for always answering the phone when I would call after hours, like the other night when the alarm was going off. I'm sure you were in the middle of dinner or something. But you're always available, and I really appreciate that. And thanks so much to Brenda and to Scott, too. Brenda, I probably heard from you the most and were, had exchanges with you the most. You were the sort of life force behind a lot of the organization and communication that happens in the office. And Scott, we're really going to miss you, too. Just a lot of institutional knowledge and expertise leaving us. And Bob, when you do come and give public comment, just make sure to turn on the light on the microphone, please. Just hit that button.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. And Bob, what can I say that could be any different from what anybody else said? Probably nothing, but I want to say thank you for everything you've done to this community. You're leaving this community in a shape much better now than it was when you first took over. That's something everybody in this community should be proud of. Thank you for your friendship. I know every now and then, I'll stop by City Hall, pay a bill or something. I come upstairs just to say hi to Bob. Hall, pay a bill or something. I come upstairs just to say hi to Bob. That's it. You ask me if I have any questions? No, I'm just stopping by to say hi. That's all. And I really appreciate your friendship. Thank you. I want to wish nothing but the best for you and your wife, everything that's good that life has to offer. You deserve it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. May I say just a very brief comment? Thank you, Mayor, and the councillors. I really appreciate your support over the years and your kind words this evening. It has been an honor to serve as the city manager of the city of Somersworth, and I appreciate all the dedicated elected and appointed officials that I've had the opportunity to work with on various committees, whether they're council committees, the special committees, or the planning board and so forth. I've served along some excellent eight mayors, about 30 some odd city councillors, attended without absence over 526 meetings, as well as special council meetings, not to count council committee meetings and planning board meetings. And it's been my distinct honor to do that. And it's been a challenge, but it's been a lot of fun, too. I also want to, I can't overlook our dedicated and professional staff without which none of this would have been possible. Particularly Scott has been at my side for some 19 years, Brenda, some 12 years or so. They're my right-hand people. Linda Curvo, our human resource manager, is right on, works right alongside me. All the department heads have been, it's just been stellar, from our new police chief to our fire chief, to director mayors, to Mike Babinski, our director of public works and utilities. Just a stellar group of professionals that I would hold against anybody in the state. I wouldn't trade them for anything, anything at all. So, again, I want to thank all our city departments for their assistance, and special appreciation to my department heads, and Director Smith, our deputy city manager, and Brenda, but all of our department heads and all of our staff. You wouldn't believe the number of compliments we get from regarding Kristen and her deputy, and our tax collector, and our planning office. It's just, it's just been a pleasure to work with the staff that we have. So, thank you once again, and with much appreciation. My last meeting. I'll see you later.
You can't have that plucked. That's city property.
They broke the molds.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And yeah, that concludes my report. Brings us to item 11, which is reports of standing committees. First up, we have the finance committee, Chairman.
No report of finance.
Thank you. Next up is government operations committee, Chairman Mishu.
And no report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is economic development committee with Chairman Goodwin out. Is Vice Chair, Vice Chair Mishu, did you have a meeting at all?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public safety committee, Chairman.
No report this evening.
Perfect. Public Works and the Environment, Chairman Witham.
Yep. Unfortunately or fortunately, I have a report. So, Public Works and Environment Committee met last Thursday, June 12, 4:30. We actually started our meeting up at the Noble Pines. The purpose of that was to take sort of a walking tour alongside the engineers from Wright Pierce that are working on sort of the proposal for the new water tower, standpipe, call it what you will, up there. If I remember correctly, the water tower, the water tank at Noble Pines is the third oldest active water tank in the country. It is in our CIP for replacement. The replacement of the tank would be a new form and structure of tank that would put the water higher in the air, if you will, to improve water pressure throughout the city, but certainly on the hill. So, a different design. And the idea is, is that we would have to construct the new water tank before dismantling the existing water tank. So, it can't be on the exact same footprint, right? The original plan that was proposed to us by Wright Pierce, which I'll call option one, place the water tank, if you were going up Hamilton Street, it would be directly in front of you. So, it would be very prominent right in the middle of the park. That met with concern from abutters, residents on the hill, as well as many council members. So, Wright Pierce developed proposals for two additional sighting locations. Option two, I would describe as being adjacent and a bit on top of the skateboard park that is up there. And then, option three, I would describe as being sort of behind the existing water tank. So, if you were standing on the corner of Grand and Hamilton Street, it would be behind the water tower. You sort of wouldn't see it until the new tower is deconstructed. Wright Pierce engineers did a center of where the water tank would be, and they actually marked out with paint the outline of the three options. And we discussed in a walking tour the pros and cons of all three options. There were a number of abutters in attendance, and there was sort of some ad hoc discussion with them as we walked around the properties as well. I would also note that one of the director abutters, Maggie Larson, our school board chair, she lives adjacent to the skateboard park, had offered up a third, a fourth option, I would guess, which was sort of between options two and three as presented by Wright Pierce engineer. So, we sort of looked at that area as well, although it was not marked out because it's not one of the Wright Pierce strategies. We then recessed. We came back here to City Hall and continued that conversation. All council members on the Public Works and Environment Committee stated various reasons why they like option three, which was the option sort of behind the existing water tank, I'll say, to the west side. It had the less, the least amount of impact on any of the recreational opportunities at the pines. It wouldn't require us to relocate any element. We wouldn't have to relocate the park, a building, a basketball court. None of that would have to be relocated. There are some trees that would have to be removed as a result of this. I think committee members thought far fewer than we envisioned because although there's a couple of larger pines there, it was really not incrementally more than option two by the skateboard park. Option one had no trees removed. It's in an open area, but again, it was the most visible, if you will. So, this would tuck it back towards the tree line. So, the Public Works and Environment Committee supported option three unanimously, and that'll be on our next council agenda under other for vote of full council to ratify that option. From there, we can then sort of move the ball because we're stuck right now. The next step in the process, as was outlined by the engineers from Wright Pierce, would be some geotechnical work. So, they basically do borings in the ground of the proposed location, and that would get tweaked a little bit if necessary because we have strong soils for support of this tank. So, if for whatever reason option three didn't work out geotechnically, we would then have to come back in front of us to explore what other option we would like to do. But that would be the next step. Again, I know we've been over this time and time again. We know the water tower needs to go on the hill. The only property the city owns on the hill is the Noble Pines Park. The infrastructure is already there, so water is piped from the water treatment plant to the Noble Pines. If we were to move it somewhere else, that's a lot of infrastructure to relocate. So, the idea is, is to place it as close to the existing tank as possible. It's just economical, and it's about all that's feasible, quite frankly, because I don't think we're going to buy historic homes through eminent domain and put the water tower somewhere else on the hill. I don't think that's a good idea, right? So, more to come on that, but that's basically where that is right now. But that is, option three is endorsed unanimously by the committee. We then reviewed a request by the Cameron Farms Homeowners Association. Cameron Farms is a small dead-end cul-de-sac off of Salmon Falls Road. They were interested in us taking over the streetlights on their road. They are ornamental streetlights. Right now, the HOA, Homeowners Association, pays for the electricity for those streetlights. I think it's about $70 a month. And they're also interested in us taking over some of the sort of homeowner association, open land space that is there. The committee, I think there's still some more work to be done there, but I think the committee is a little bit concerned about us doing this because there are a number of other subdivisions in the city that have similar lighting and open space that's maintained by the homeowners association. So, this could open up a Pandora's box, if you will, of this happening in many, many spots. I think we rattled off at least half a dozen that we knew of off the top of our head. So, more on that, but nothing to be done with it, at least currently. Under miscellaneous, we did discuss a couple of items that councillors raised, one of which I would note is councillor Vincent did talk about work that could be done by the city on the city-owned alley behind the plaza and along the plaza in terms of maintenance of that roadway, some overgrown vegetation. We talked about the stairs. So, that was flagged for maybe some assessment by Public Works and maybe some future work. We also talked about maybe some paving considerations in the future, not only including that, but John Parsons Drive in constitutional way. So, city engineer was going to look at that, and that might be included in our FY '26 paving profile if we should desire to move in that direction. So, city manager also updated us on the fact that the city was awarded the state revolving loan for the, so, SRF for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade phase two, which is, I think, estimated about a $22 million project. There will be some additional legislation needed to award contract oversight to Wright Pierce engineers, and that'll be teed up in a coming meeting as we get there. I'll conclude the report with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have recreation committee, Chairwoman Cameron.
I actually have a report tonight. Okay, we met on June 4 at 4:30. And the first thing on our agenda was the Little League Mural update. So, if anybody knows, we are looking into doing a mural down at the Little League Field on the dugout facing Maple Street. And you can go on the Facebook recreation page and vote for the mural that you like. So, we had three designs that came in, and we had one that is just called Game Day Essentials. Then we had another one that was called One Big Team that had all the jerseys with names on it. And then we had a really flashy one that was Take a Swing at Somersworth. So, you're to go on and vote. And just to give you a little history of the names of the teams on there, they are the classics from back in the day from businesses that supported the teams then. So, we wanted to teach a little bit of history along with the mules. So, that's why the names of those teams are on there. They are going to be adding the tallies up Wednesday, if I recall. So, please go on the Somersworth Rec page and vote for your favorite. So far, I can tell it's getting close between one and three from what I've seen. So, please pick your favorite. He's going to be looking to do that the last week in July, and that was part of the stipulation for the grant, was to have public participation. We had a Butterfly Ash Street Park update, and the park is done. And it was proposed by the recreation office that, to purchase butterfly kits from Amazon. This would include 10 to 20 live caterpillars that would be taken to the library where they would be hatched, the process that takes approximately two to three weeks. And then after that, they were going to bring them over to the butterfly park to release them. So, as a group, we voted that the staff should consider purchasing four kits. So, we'll have a lot of little butterflies. Program updates. Track and field ended on June 14, and kids camp is full for the 2025 year with 47 campus. It's fully staffed and will include 13-day trips to various state parks, as well as special trips such as the fire station, Dover Children's Museum. There's going to be a Hill Topper Plus walking program that just concluded the spring edition, but will return in the fall, along with Peewee Soccer that will be beginning September 6. And Tiny Toppers took place at Noble Pines this May, this past May, and will return again in the fall. Park updates, that all city parks were opened on the 15th of April, and there are several projects that are currently being worked on by Public Works that include new dugouts at Jewels Besson Park, the replacement of degraded workshops at Noble Pines. And Public Works have also replaced all the ropes that were damaged by vandalism at Will and Bond. And under miscellaneous, where it was Pride Month, we had talked about maybe painting the crosswalks. Then we came up with another idea of ordering rainbow ribbon, and we decorated the four trees out front. And we did that right before the raising of the Pride flag. So, we adjourned at 5:05. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Brings us to item 12 on our agenda, which is reports of special committees. Are there any reports of special committees? We have councillor Pepin, then councillor Vincent.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We had an E-911 meeting at the Somersworth Police Department on June 6, 1:00 p.m. This is the second time that we've brought up St. Martin's Church. It proposed road to St. Martin's Way beside it. The reason why we kind of like put this on the back burner is that we wanted to make sure that there was enough passageway for fire trucks and to make their radius turns and everything that they needed. They've come back, and everything has been solved there. We talked about also naming it St. Martin Circle because it has a different way back out onto High Street. Father didn't like that situation simply because he'd like to have it just one way, the street coming into it. He feels like if the gate is opened off of Dulson Street and that other means of egress, he says cars travel through there pretty fast. Whether it's a church parking lot, we have kids running around or whatever, he felt that that was not being very, very safe. So, he really wants one way in and one way out as far as for the office building that they, that they bought, a building on the end of Dulson Street, which they converted into their new office, which now they have moved in to completely from West High Street, from Holy Trinity Church. So, they're all moved in. Right now, they're still using the address of High Street for us until we officially name the name of the street so they can get a street address onto it. So, I will be asking for a second reading, and I appreciate anybody supporting it because hopefully they'll get a mailing address so they can get their mail there. So, they're kind of like setting it up almost like a campus area. The rectory will have a number off of St. Martin's Way. The church will have a number, and also the office, and he calls it the community center. And he also asked that there was a storage garage there that's being utilized quite a bit now, that there's going to be a lot of activities more out of it. And he worried about possibly having a medical call there or something when people are off. So, he did question us giving an address for that, too. So, that's being looked into. But tonight is, I hope for the support of 60-25 for the resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. Traffic Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, which is June 18 at 2:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you. Other reports of special committees? Okay. Seeing none, I will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his final manager's report.
And it'll be brief, Your Honor. Jump right over to new business, Resolution 6125, authorizing the manager to sign a deed to convey ownership of the former National Guard Readiness Center on Blackwater Road to Blackwater, 15 Blackwater Road LLC of Hooks at New Hampshire, and to accept easements to provide access to the monitoring well located on their property and to provide access to the Somersworth Little League Ball Field. I provided you a draft copy of the deed. It was a quick claim deed that was prepared by our city attorney. There may be additional edits that the developer's attorney may request, and we'll have further discussion should you authorize us moving forward with the final sale. It's been, it seems like it's been almost two years. It's been a long time. Planning board has approved the project, so that's been done. We've worked at EverSource about a lot line adjustment and the road issue. So, I think everything is pretty much concluded. I would ask that you, and recommend that you waive rules for second reading and vote tonight so we can move forward to closing this property next week before I leave office. And in any event, it's been a long project, as well as the solar ray. If you look, if you've driven down Blackwater Road, it's coming along very nicely. That took some 15 years to get that done. It required state legislation to change, quite frankly, but we tried to work through it with a couple of of companies and finally landed in agreement with Amoresco. The city provides, it receives a pilot, a payment on lieu of taxes for this project. We also received some land lease funding, and we will receive some credit in the form of a check that will offset our electrical costs. We are working with the school. The school is going to be discussing. Also being a partner in the power that's going to the grid. So, we're trying to finalize that. They may have to wait for the new manager to finalize that, should the school board vote to also participate. Again, the Chapter 31, to approve the revitalization tax relief incentive program application, was vetted through the EDC, and they voted to support the request for five years. I did provide the council with a copy of the city ordinance, as well as a memorandum prepared by Director Michelle Mears. Informational, I did, for those who didn't get to all their emails, I provided you a copy in the packet, a memorandum from Fire Chief Matt Moore regarding surplus equipment that was placed on GovDales. Now that we received a new boat through a grant process, we can put on GovDales the old boat and motor and so forth. So, that was in your packet. Prime recertification from Primex. I didn't have this in written form, but I'd like to read it. Since March 1st of 2016, the city has received the prime designation each year. The designation acknowledges the city's ongoing commitment to risk management for employees, residents, and facilities. And as part of this process, in return, we receive a 2.5% discount on premiums for the city's workers' compensation and property and liability insurance. Primex requires two applications, one's for workers' comp and one for property and liability, and we have participated in both. So, we did receive final approval June 12th for both our workers' comp self-assessment and our property and liability self-assessment. So, I want to thank staff, in particular Linda Curv, who our Human Rights Services Manager that helps lead this application process, that gives us a significant discount in our premiums each year since 2016. Finally, Planner of the Year. Congratulations, for those who don't receive the city's newsletter, to Michelle Mears, Director of Planning and Community Development. And I did provide you a copy of her receiving the award at the State Planners' Convention this year. So, congratulations, Michelle.
Good job, Michelle.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Members of the council. Can I go now?
Almost. We're almost there. All right. Brings us to item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. We have none. Brings us to item 14, which is items that have been laid upon the table. There's one item on the table, which is Ordinance 19-25. What are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor, I'd like to remove Ordinance 1925 from the table.
Counselor Witham makes a motion to remove Ordinance 19-25 from the table, seconded by Counselor Gibson. The motion for the council is to remove Ordinance 19-25 from the table. This is a non-debatable motion. If you are in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Ordinance 19-25 has been removed from the table. This ordinance has been read a first and second time, amended, heard for two public hearings, and now removed, is open to further amendment. Is there any other amendment to this ordinance? Seeing none. It will be, what are the wishes of the council? Counselor Witham?
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Counselor Witham moves to the adoption of Ordinance 19-25, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Thank you. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Ordinance 19-25. Discussion. Counselor Witham?
Yeah, I think we have discussed and vetted this perhaps as much as any other ordinance that's been in front of us. It relates to accessory dwelling units. It expands the ability for properties to utilize accessory dwelling units. They no longer have to be attached. We've spent quite a bit of time discussing square footage requirements, what's usable space, habitable space, and I think this meets sort of the needs of the community without going overboard, I guess is how I sum it up.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you. I am going to be in support of this ordinance this evening. However, I do want to caution kind of, this really opens up a lot of opportunity, and it could really, I'm hoping that it's all going to go good, you know what I mean? Because it's kind of an area that, you know, we're trying to improve and make more housing, but if everybody did another, one of these things, one of these buildings or accessory dwelling, there could be a lot more people in the city, which I understand that we have housing demands, and I just cross my fingers to make sure it all goes good.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yeah, if there's no one else. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Witham.
Counselor Vincent raises a good point. I think everything is done with maybe some trepidation. Like any ordinance, if we find that it's not working as intended, it can be amended in the future. So, there's always that parachute, I suppose, Counselor.
All right. Other discussion? Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 19-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
He's absent.
Sorry. Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Right. Ordinance 19-25 has been adopted. Thank you. Brings us to item 15 on our agenda, which is unfinished business. We have Ordinance 25-25, which remains with the Economic Development Committee, so we will move beyond that. Brings us to a second reading on Ordinance 26-25, which is to amend Chapter 4 Personnel Rules and Regulations, Appendix 2 Compensation Schedule, which if approved, would allow for a 3% salary increase to the Appendix 2 Compensation Schedule. City Clerk?
Ordinance number 2625, to amend Chapter 4 Personnel Rules and Regulations, Appendix 2 Compensation Schedule.
Thank you. Ordinance 2625, having read a first and second time, is now open for further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Ordinance 26-25. Counselor Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves to the adoption of Ordinance 26-25, seconded by Counselor Michu. Motion for the council's on the adoption of Ordinance 26-25. Discussion. Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 26-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Right. Ordinance 26-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 27-25, which is to transfer between departments for fiscal year 2425, which if approved, would transfer a total of $95,000 between departments. City Clerk?
Ordinance number 2725, transfer between departments for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Thank you. Ordinance 27-25, having read a first and now second time, is open for further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Ordinance 27-25. Counselor Witham?
Again, move for its adoption.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Again, the motion for the council is on the adoption of Ordinance 27-25. Discussion. Counselor Vincent?
Yeah. So, here in the city for several years, thank you, Your Honor, by the way. Here in the city for several years, I think the management and the department heads have always had in the back of their minds, you know, that, let me rephrase it. They don't go into the new budget season with spending every dime. I think we kind of have to realize that we have ups and downs in different departments, and sometimes having a little money at the end of the year that you can, I guess we could say forfeit, or give to the other departments, really helps out. And, you know, I knew under the management of several chiefs that they kept that in mind. I just want to say thank you for that. Does that mean that I want you to, you know, go without the most, you know, elite equipment? No. But keeping that in mind really helps out and balances. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 27-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Right. Ordinance 27-25 has been adopted. Brings us to our resolutions. Under unfinished business, the chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 58-25, which is to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for a traffic enforcement patrols grant, which if approved, would award the city $8,500 towards increased traffic control enforcement. City Clerk?
Resolution number 5825, to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for a traffic enforcement patrols grant.
Thank you. Resolution 58-25, having read a first and now second time, is open for further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Resolution 58-25. Counselor Barry?
I move that we adopt this.
Counselor Barry moves to the adoption of Resolution 58-25, seconded by Counselor Pepin. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 58-25. Discussion. Counselor Barry?
I think this is something that I'm very happy that we're getting. I think we've all had complaints about traffic, different things going on with that. I think anything we can do to help, and also the fact that we're not going to take the bill on by ourselves is great, so.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right. Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 58-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Right. Right. Resolution 58-25 has been adopted. The chair recognizes the clerk for both a first reading and a second reading on Resolution 60-25, which is naming St. Martin's Way as a private road. City Clerk?
Resolution number 6025, naming St. Martin's Way as a private road. Resolution number 6025, naming St. Martin's Way as a private road.
Thank you. It's a fun form. No, you're doing great. You're doing good. It's a silly formality, but it does need to be done.
That's a first.
I know. Isn't it? 60-25, having read a first and second time, is now open for further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Resolution 60-25. Counselor Pepin?
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Pepin moves to the adoption of Resolution 60-25, seconded by Counselor Gibson. The motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 60-25. Discussion. Counselor Pepin?
I got one thing I should have mentioned. The original house was, the address was off of Dulce Street. Since they reconstructed the building, the main entrance is in the parking lot of St. Martin's for means of entry into the building, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right. Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of, what's that, 60-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Resolution 60-25 has been adopted. The chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading and second reading by title only on Resolution 61-25, which is to authorize the city manager to sign a deed to convey ownership of the former Blackwater, excuse me, former National Guard Readiness Center located on 15 Blackwater Road to 15 Blackwater Road LLC of Hooks at New Hampshire, and to accept easements to provide access to the monitoring well located on Tax Map 22 Lot 10, and to provide access to the Summersworth Little League Ball Field. City Clerk?
Resolution number 6125, to authorize the city manager to sign a deed to convey ownership of the former National Guard Readiness Center located at 15 Blackwater Road to 15 Blackwater Road LLC of Hooks at New Hampshire, and to accept easements to provide access to the monitoring well located on Tax Map 22 Lot 10, and to provide access to the Summersworth Little League Ball Field. Resolution number 6125, to authorize the city manager to sign a deed to convey ownership of the former National Guard Readiness Center located at 15 Blackwater Road to 15 Blackwater Road LLC of Hooks at New Hampshire, and to accept easements to provide access to the monitoring well located on Tax Map 22 Lot 10, and to provide access to the Summersworth Little League Ball Field. Resolution number 6125, to authorize the city manager to sign a deed to convey ownership of the former National Guard Readiness Center located at 15 Blackwater Road to 15 Blackwater Road LLC of Hooks at New Hampshire, and to accept easements to provide access to the monitoring well located on Tax Map 22 Lot 10, and to provide access to the Summersworth Little League Ball Field.
Thank you. Resolution 61-25, having read a first and now second time, is open for further amendment. Seeing no amendment, I'll look for a motion on Resolution 61-25. Counselor Witham?
Move for its adoption.
All right. Counselor Witham moves to the adoption of Resolution 61-25, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 61-25. Discussion. Counselor Witham?
Yes, just thankfully, we've reached what I perceived to be a bit of a finish line here. It has been a, quite a process, a lot of players, a lot of formality, and I do thank the developers for their patience. Municipal government, I think, is designed to be slow, and this amplifies that in spades. So, thank you for your patience there. I know I flagged at a prior meeting, and just to make sure we don't need any other action here, the need to relocate the flagpoles and scoreboards because they are on this property that's being conveyed to what is the Little League Field property, city property, just to make note that that is underway. I guess that's a question.
City Manager?
Yes, I've mentioned it by email correspondence to the developers, and I've asked staff to reach out to Little League to try to set up a meeting where we all can go on-site and figure out where it should go. So, it's in the works.
Great. Great. I was reminded of that tonight. Tonight was the city championship for the Little League title. Interestingly enough, it was fire versus police, and I think late word is that the police team won this evening, so.
Ah. That's great. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Parity Cottenzero?
I just have a question about the no lights being installed. Are there not currently any lights? Is that never needed for the Little League game?
Affirmative, the City Manager?
Yeah, there are no, there's no night play. There's no lights there now. The developers are concerned about any light shedding over into the townhouses. I had staff reach out to Little League. They have no plans on doing it. They were made aware that if, when it's sold, it can't come up in a year or five years or 10 years from now.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 61-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero?
Yes.
Michu?
Yes.
Right. Resolution 61-25 has been adopted. Brings us to items under other. Tonight, under other, we have a vote to approve the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application from Devon Powell of Nostos MMA Gym for the redevelopment project at One Summersworth Plaza, which is our former Lucky's supermarket. Be looking for a motion from the council that explicitly states the number of years that we would like to approve this for. Is there a motion from the council? Counselor?
I've said enough, David.
Counselor, or Parity Cottenzero?
I would like to motion to approve the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application for the redevelopment project at One Summersworth Plaza, former Lucky's supermarket, for seven years.
Seven years. We have a motion made for an application for seven years. Is there a second? She said seven. I see no second, which means I'll look for a new motion. Counselor Barry? You'll second? Counselor Barry seconds. All right. So, the motion for the council is on approval for seven years. What is, or, excuse me, discussion. Counselor Witham?
Yeah, I'm fully in support of the relief for the period of five years because that was recommended by committee. I would entertain the seven if that was articulated, and I'm also looking for a bit of background for maybe a committee member on economic development, why five years was arrived at. So, I guess I got a couple of questions there. Let me just say outwardly whether it ends up being five or seven, depending upon that debate. The idea that we're going to bring an established business to a vacant storefront to allow that business to expand itself is net positive for both the business and the city. It's It's going to create additional walking traffic and vehicular traffic which further supports other businesses in the area, which is the intent of this tax relief. It's designed exactly for this. So, I am in full support of this. I drive Market Street regularly and I see the patrons of the gym darting across the street trying to find a parking space, so I get it and I'm super excited that you're doing so well and, yeah, I'm in full support of this. Again, let's have a debate around the five or seven years and how we arrived at this conversation.
Thank you. Manager Belmore.
Yes, if you look at the city ordinance, if you're able to pull that up or I'll just brief you out on it. The city council may grant such tax assessment relief for a period of up to five years, beginning with the completion of the substantial rehabilitation. The council may, in its discretion, add up to an additional two years of tax relief if, provided the project results in new non-subsidized residential units. And again, this more language about whether it's on, could be on an upper floor, but it has to deal with non-subsidized residential units. You could also add up to four additional years of tax relief if it's a qualifying structure that is listed or determined eligible for National Historic, National Register of Historic Places, State Register of Historic Places, or is located within an importance or locally designated historic district, provided the rehab is done in accordance with the Secretary of State's standards of rehabilitation. So, without the discussion at the EDC, certainly the memo from Director Mears, it only qualifies for five to go by our ordinance. I don't think, you know, you have to find another reason that's articulated in the ordinance on why you can add two more years and we didn't think you could do that because there's no housing being involved.
Nor is it in the historic district.
Right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. With that in mind, I would recommend that we drop down to five, but I will let Counselor Parity, who made the motion, articulate maybe her reasoning as to why seven was the choice, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I misremembered. I thought we had leeway to go up to seven and considering the longstanding business and all they do for the community, I just thought, let's give them the max. I didn't realize those two years were contingent on housing, so it sounds like maybe we need to drop to five. I'm happy to amend my motion to five if the second will.
I'm happy to amend as well.
It looks like our motion has been changed to five. All right. Further discussion? Counselor Vincent, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, to get this clear, so I think, I understand it, is that they'll still be paying taxes on the space at the current, at the current where we're at now.
Correct.
And any improvements and so forth will just be calculated and then just paid down the line. Just want to make that clear for everybody.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Berry.
I think as part of earlier comments today, I think our plaza area, our downtown in the Main Street area needs help. I think this is something that I think that this was put together for specifically. Again, it was talked about that this will bring more traffic, this will bring more walkability. I think this will help the businesses that are down there. I know we have a barber shop that's at the end of Main. I know we have a new antique or store that's also down there. We have the folks in the plaza. I think anything we can do that helps that is, I'm in favor and I also look at it as we don't lose. If that space remains empty, we still get the same tax amount whether or not it gets revitalized or not, but we will get more money in the long run at the end of the day, so.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yeah, so I just wanted to re-articulate my strong support of this and this goes right alongside what we all discussed at the workshop, which is that we really want there to be development there and good development there. There just can't be a better way to incentivize good development there. And I don't know exactly where this would fall, but I feel like another thing that we can do in addition to, I really appreciate the Counselor Vincent brought up at the Public Works and Environment Committee, doing some cleanup around there. I think revisiting a conversation in whatever committee it belongs in of some wayfinding, maybe around the flagpole area up here, the citizens place to sort of point in that direction with some of the businesses that are there, in addition to the signage right at the end of the plaza are good opportunities to consider.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Witham.
Yeah, I'll just jump on board. It kind of dovetails and I want to put some, I guess, reassurance to the folks from Nostos that I'm another counselor that does not support the eminent domain idea. I am in full support, and I spoke about this at the workshop, of doing what we can to enhance that area and perhaps should have been done years ago, but I think we can maybe light a fire with our new city manager that we need to kind of move this up on the priority list. And, yeah, I'm kind of in full support of that. I think I've played pinball before, so maybe I'll go give that a whirl. You all know that I've never been to a concert in my life and this may not surprise you. I can't say that I've ever played a record with a little thingy, so maybe I got to try that out too. So, what is that called? There's a thing, right? So, I got some work to do and I've done mixed martial arts, but I'm willing to give it a try at least once, so it may look pretty ugly, but I'll give it a try. Say what?
There's also gentle yoga.
I've never done that either, so I got a long list of things I got to do, so I'll start down there.
You'll be spending some time at the plaza, I think. Other discussion?
Before you say you're building an apartment there, so we can go up to seven years?
Too good. Other discussion? All right. Seeing none. The motion before us is to vote in favor of the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application for Devon Powell of Nostos MMA Gym for a period of five years, just to make sure that's clear. If you're in favor of the approval of this application, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Mishu.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Application is approved. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item seventeen, which is comments by visitors. Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors. Encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limited five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into debate with the mayor, the city manager, council members, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Please come on up and state your name and where you live.
The light's already on. Good evening. I'm Bonnie McNair, Ward one. I'm also the, as you may know, the chamber director here in Summersworth. Counselor Witham, good luck on your growing bucket list. If you need, if you need a wingman, let me know. Woman, whatever, wing person, I guess. I just wanted to quickly say first, thank you to Mr. Belmore. I know I have only been in this role for coming up on two years now, but I've been a citizen of Summersworth for over 10 years and I've seen it come a very long way and I know that you're a big, a very big part of why that has happened and part of why I've become so involved in this community because of its possibility, its potential. And so, thank you for, for driving some of that potential. And good luck. Have fun. Have fun. Go golfing. Also, thank you to all of you for passing the ADUs. This is, I believe, an a very, very important step that we need to take to meet the moment and the needs of the community. And I think, I think as most legislation goes, it is, it is fluid, so as things change, we can, we can change those things too. Earlier, I was kind of alerted by some concerns about empty buildings, absentee landlords, the discussion of eminent domain. I was not able to, I was in DC doing other cool things while you guys had your workshop, but as the chamber director, I pay attention to these things. And when we have empty buildings, we have missed opportunities. When we have empty buildings, we have potential new owners skipping our area because it looks ugly. And so, as a chamber director, part of my job is to lift up businesses in this area. If we don't have those businesses, I don't have a job. If we don't have those businesses, we don't have growth. And you guys all know what that means. So, I would, I would say for a couple of reasons, as I always, I come up here all the time and say, let's please do something as a group, city, chamber, businesses, to really do something about this. We're at a precipice now. We can do these things. Absent a former, a formal business development position within the city, it does fall upon me as the chamber to make sure to welcome, engage, pursue, and support all the businesses in this area, not just my member businesses, which is a little unique to our community. But this can't be the job of one person. So, I would, as both a concerned citizen and the leader of the chamber, I would like to call upon the city to please form a commission, a committee, something, work with the chamber, work with our city, state, federal legislators, and find some rules of engagement for these landowners that we have so many problems with. There's got to be a way. Other cities do it. We have to find the way. Everybody else is growing. We need to keep the pace or we're, we're just going to stay stagnant. And while we do not want to turn our beautiful little city into Portsmouth or Boston, we need to at least be able to keep it, Summersworth. So, that is all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I yield my time.
Other comments by visitors this evening? Yes, thank you. If you wouldn't mind, state your name and where you live.
My name is Ethan Clark. I live at seventeen Winslow Drive. I just want to address the council because I would like to start hearing some conversation on what the plan is to get the rest of Rocky Hill Road paved. I have brought up this question to individual council members. The response I've always gotten is we're working with Rochester and we're going to get to it. I've been a resident at Winslow Drive for seven years now and is still a dirt road. We just got the approval to get some money put over there so that way we could get some repairs done. Those were much needed repairs. But when, as a resident, when we're working with Rochester and then you pull out and Haven Hill now has wonderful, brand-new pavement on it. Our side of Ward one has a very low rental rate. We are homeowners, taxpayers, contributors to this community, and the fact that many of us have to either take a detour completely out of our way or drive over that road, damage our vehicles, that type of stuff. I'm not saying those conversations haven't happened. I would just like to know as a resident, when is it going to happen? It's very tough as a resident when, well, we're working with Rochester, we're going to get there, we're going to get there. Rochester has a brand-new road now, fully paved. Ours is still dirt. I'd like that addressed. One of the items also that I wanted to discuss, or at least just bring attention to, as you guys had a vote to, of the assigning of different department funds, is what the system is for checks and balances with the school board. And I would like it brought up in discussion before the next budget meeting, how fund balances are used at the end of the year. I've started to attend some more of those meetings and I want to be very clear that we have an amazing school board. They do an amazing job for our community and for the community's children. I was a little taken back when I attended the meeting on June 10th to find out that there is a total fund balance of $565,000, of which only $200,000 of that is going to be applied towards next year's budget. $365,000 was voted on that night to be spent. Whereas in these chambers, I listen to the conversations, I have attended both councils' meetings. If there is $365,000 and there's only 20 days left in that calendar school year, I believe the taxpayers are entitled to having a little bit more of a due process, I think. I'm a resident. I don't know what that process is. I just think it's kind of interesting that we had to sit here, we, all of you had to endure that budget season. Oh, and by the way, we got to the end of the year and there's a half million dollars sitting there, of which $365,000 in one vote was reallocated without it coming back to the council. Not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying as a resident, it just didn't really sit well with me, that there was that much pressure put on you guys, there was that much pressure put on to the school board, just to, within less than 45 days, there's a half a million dollars just sitting there. Just my interpretation of it. The last thing too that I would like to bring up, and I know I'm running out of time really quick, it was kind of disappointing as a resident to hear only negative remarks about the Seton Academy going in. St. Ignatius Parish services over 2,000 parishioners in our community, 2,000. I looked up the tax lines before I came in. Pinewood Drive has 40 taxable parcel units, so I understand there may be some questions. The only comments I heard from this council were all negative. First thing on that seal that Summersworth Incorporated was a parish. And for anybody not to have the approach of, or at least the acknowledgement of what the Roman Catholic community has done in the city of Summersworth, and they are here to establish a school to develop the children, many of the lifelong residents of Summersworth still talk about the stories of when they attended Catholic school. If you have a market of 2,000 parishioners and they are looking to put something to bring in more families, I think the dialogue should maybe be a little bit more constructive of how we can try and make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by visitors this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Brings us to item eighteen, which is closing comments by council members. Counselor Peppin, you were up first this evening.
You're going to hit me first.
I know, sorry.
The comment about Rocky Hill Road, the further end of Rocky Hill, I think it was that last council meeting, I brought it up on the other again. I've brought that up every year, I think, two or three times a year, so I, there is a push to try to get, get it done. It all comes down to money. How much, how much road money we have to spend and what condition the other roads are and how the travel, the people that travel the roads and everything else. I would love to see it done. I know I've, I've pushed it several times, so that's the best I can do right now. I have only one vote here, so, and it has to get on agenda. Bob, I'm going to hate to see you go, like I said earlier. The other people I'm going to hate to see go is Scott. Scott, you have done, there's been things brought up here that I have no idea what the heck they're talking about and you turned it back into English so I can understand it. And that is deeply appreciated. Your thought, your knowledge in the city government and how to get funds and how to do things is unreal and it is going to be a great loss for the city of Summersworth. I wish you would have applied for the city manager's position because you would have got it as far as I was concerned, but I concede your reasoning why you didn't and I wish you the best. I see Brenda is gone. I wish the best for Brenda. For those that don't know Brenda, she's the city manager's secretary. She's also my secretary in a roundabout way because she knows I don't stand in front of a computer all day long and I don't like emails and I don't like texts, so she usually calls and gives me a heads up of what's going on. And my wife's going to miss it too because she likes answering the phone call when Brenda's on the end, other end, because they have a good conversation. So she is gonna be deeply missed. So changes are coming. I'm sure we'll work everything out, and everything will be good. And wish the best for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vincent, your name.
Thank you, Your Honor. As far as Rocky Hill Road, I would ask the city manager to put on the Public Works next session to talk about it and possibly, or even get it on the list. It's been talked about at Public Works quite a bit. And I know there were some issues with Rochester and, and what that was going on, but we can, we can move forward and try to get that done. You know, I praised the city manager earlier, but let's face it, you know, Brenda really was the brains behind all this operation. Just kidding, Bob. But really, what makes, what makes a good boss is his personal assistant. I know in my world, my personal assistant's my wife, it might be a little different, but I just want to say that, yeah, it makes it a lot easier. And I know that she definitely, definitely helped out tremendously. Sad and that she's not here, but thanks a lot. Shout out Brenda, thank you so very much. Scott Smith over there, I see you over there, Scott. You know, I come into this and knowing nothing really about budgets, and calling you up and taking time from you and to explain it, and you took, you were very patient, I appreciate that. There's just one thing that I'm just a little saddened about. After the last meeting, and I did beat Dave Witham in golf by one stroke, I was hoping to close in on you. However, I didn't have that opportunity, but I wish you the best. Thank you so very much. And yeah, I really wish that you were gonna be the next city manager also. Take care.
Thank you. Councilor Gibson?
To Scott, you've always had the answers when the questions came up, which just shows how well-prepared you are and how dedicated you are to doing a good job. So can we talk you out of it? And Brenda, always a pleasure to deal with, she will be missed. I feel somewhat negligent, I wasn't aware of what was happening at Pinewood. I appreciate that an institution wants to move into the city. The big issue I have, and it's not really with them, but it's that the way that the state of New Hampshire in particular has chosen to rob Peter to pay Paul. We can't get full funding for things that the state has mandated to the communities, but they come up with the school voucher program to draw money out of the communities for private schools. I have nothing against private schools, but it seems to me that the state has a responsibility to support public education as much as it seems like they want to support private education. And that's not being negative to the people who are trying to come into Pinewood, it's just that this has been an ongoing battle in this country for the last 20 or 30 years, where the powers that be seem to want to destroy public education. Maybe it's because they figured that if they dumbed down the public education, people won't notice some of the, sorry, stuff that they're doing. So I welcome the folks to come into Pinewood. I have nothing against anybody who is a Catholic. I have Catholics in my family, so I better not. And over, over and above that, the coming time is gonna be trying for the city. And I had this debate, it's funny how things never seem to change, with decisions made by the school board about unexpended funds way back when I was on the school board. And the attitude that, well, the unexpended funds are ours, they're in our budget. Yeah, technically right, but the taxpayers of the city of Summersworth are the ones that are providing those funds. And to just decide, I mean, I have, I have no idea what they're gonna manage to spend $300,000 on in a 20-day period that makes any real sense to me. It's basically an attitude of, yeah, don't give anything back to the city, 'cause it's ours to do as we want with. That, to me, is a very bad attitude on the part of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry, Kanzera?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to address the school board funding thing as well as the council rep. I'm happy to just report out on that. About $200,000, as, as the resident said, went into this coming year's budget, so I know we all did some creative things to try to find some extra funding, so that fewer people would have to be let go from the schools this coming year. Of course, they have to be as conservative as possible, so they couldn't estimate that they would be left over with more than that, or I'm sure more would have been applied forward into the next year. And just to the question of what the $278,000 is for, you may recall a couple times being presented to about the technology improvements at the school. There are security issues, there are technology improvements, there are outdated technology that a lot of the students are dealing with. I know that one of the items on that list, which takes up a big part of it, is a one-to-one program, which is one student, one device. Most schools in the area have devices that they offer to their students. I believe they're Chromebooks, I could be wrong with that. But it's basically a matter of equity, so that students who can't afford a computer don't get, don't fall behind on various technological school supports. It does not mean that they're moving into only online, they were very clear about that. The instruction is remaining in person, and technology is just to help that along. But this essentially takes that part of Phase Two, which would have been requested in this coming year out of the budget. They were able to apply it to that, since they can't apply it forward. So that is what those funds were expended on. I just want to also just say, welcome to the slightly even closer neighborhood, to our plaza folks, and just happy to see all of that pass tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up is Councilor Mishu.
Thank you. I see Brenda has left, so I have a feeling she might be watching it tomorrow, at least at the end, so I really want to make public knowledge to her that she's a great person, Bob's right-hand person, assistant. I don't know if Bob knows it, but when I used to come up just to say hi, you were in a meeting, or you're out of office, I used to sit down, have nice conversations with Brenda. Dare to say, excuse the language, but bitch sessions sometimes, but it was all good. So I'm really gonna miss those. So Scott, when I heard that you were leaving, I knew Bob and Brenda was retiring, and it was just before I left to go out to Seattle, and my heart dropped, I could not believe you were leaving us. When I finally came back, I stopped in your office to talk to you, and I remember during the conversation, I mentioned that maybe I should bring it up, the city council, and have us vote if we should allow you to leave us. I have a strong feeling that the answer would be no, but jokingly, yes. But I just want to say, I thank you for everything you do. Every budget season since I've been on council, you completely amaze me with your numbers, how fast, we have a question, within seconds, you have the answer for us. You're gonna have, we're gonna have tough shoes, you, you're gonna, tough shoes to fill with you, Bob, and Brenda, the three people that really are at the City Hall. So I know you accepted another job close, much closer to home. I wish you luck there, which I'm sure that's not gonna be a problem, but you will be dearly missed also here at City Hall. So thank you for everything you do. Michelle Mears, another one I like to call a friend. And yes, on occasion, I do stop in the planning department just to say hi to Michelle, and catch up on what might be coming in or in the city. So congratulations on your Planner of Year Award, much deserving. Bob, once again, you put an amazing team here at City Hall together, and I cannot just say, City Hall, the whole community, every department, the police department is just amazing, the fire department, Public Works, I can't say enough about Public Works. So you did an awesome job, and I don't know if we'll ever find a city manager as good as you, so thank you for everything you've done. And as far as repaving that section of Rocky Hill Road, if you're looking for a vote, my answer is yes. Let's get it done. So, and the gentleman that came up and talked about St. Ignatius Parish, Father Andrew, since he arrived only eight years, what he has done in that parish is simply amazing. He just didn't turn it into a parish that you come in, you go to church, see you, see you next week for the next service. He put so many programs in place, there's something for everybody in there to do. He built, it's not just a parish, it's a family. And if people don't go there, you should check it out, because it's, it's one big happy family there. It's unbelievable what he has done. And I, I'm dreading the day when the bishop in Manchester decides to pull him out and relocate him. It is gonna be heartbreaking for me. He's an awesome person. Especially when my mother passed away, he really helped me through that. So anyways, I wish everybody happy Fourth of July. We won't be back till after the Fourth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Witham?
Thank you. I think many of you know that professionally, I'm allowed to traverse the state and deal with local governments in just about every community across the state. And I can say honestly, and it's not because I'm a counselor here, it's not because I'm a resident here, I can honestly say that we have crackerjack staff here in Summersworth. It certainly starts with Bob at the top, and you've assembled a quality team. Scott, there, there isn't a finance director in the state that can hold a candle to you, and that's a testament to your, your work ethic, your knowledge, your background. We are the better for it here in Summersworth. Again, stopping at a lot of town halls and city halls, no one greets people quite like Brenda, she has a very pleasant face. And you're right, Councilor Mishu, sometimes you can just chat with her, because Bob's not in, and she can be that sounding board for you, so. And, and that extends to all of our department heads. I'd put our PD, our fire department, our Public Works, our planning office, oh, imagine that, Planner of the Year, so congratulations there. We really do have a solid, solid team here in Summersworth, and, and we're the better, better for it, too, so. The manager wants to give a shout-out to the water and wastewater folks, I consider them part of Public Works, but quality staff, I mean, we could go on and on, recreation, the list goes on and on. The library, right? Who else am I missing? Right? So there you go. Rocky Hill Road, it was discussed at our last Public Works meeting last week, and we were all like aghast that Rochester was paving Haven Hill Road, and why didn't we know about this? Because that was the time to leverage that operation and pave Rocky Hill Road, the mobilization of equipment and all of that. I don't know if it's a breakdown in communication, we gotta do a better job of communicating with our neighbors and get this done. So I saw the city manager write a note, Rocky Hill Road paving. Hopefully, we can reach out to Rochester and make this happen. It would be a shame not to get it done. The opportunity was just there, swing and a miss, right? So I think we can perhaps do better. You know, regarding Seton Academy and the negativity, you know, I'm, I went to Catholic school up through sixth grade, I believe. My son went to St. Mary's in Dover through sixth grade. I'm a practicing Catholic, at least I was, maybe I gotta turn in my card, maybe at least go to confession, I suppose. But it, it's a classic example of often in this seat, I find my love for the city and what I need to do for the city in direct conflict with my faith. It happens all of the time. And there are times where it causes me to stop going to church for a long time, because it's like, no, I gotta do what's right for the city, and then I go back. And this is one of those times. So maybe I fall away for a while, and then I'll, I'll find my way back. But I am dead-set against the voucher program, as you'll characterize it. It doesn't make any sense. I would never expect anybody to pay for me to go to Catholic school. I never expected anybody to pay for my son to go to Catholic school, and I am dead-set against that. And if that means I cannot go through the doors at St. Ignatius, so be it, because that matters. That's all.
Thank you. Councilor Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Scott, for all your help through the budget season that we've been through and answering all my questions. And to Brenda, even though she's not here, I echo everybody's sentiments that we have top-notch department heads and city associates, just everybody in the city is amazing. And there are gonna be some tough shoes to fill, that's for sure. This Saturday is the Children's Festival, 10 to 3 downtown. The celebration is the 27th. It is not this Friday before the festival, it's a week later, just so people keep that in mind. We also have Don't Trash Summersworth Saturday from 2 to 3. And one of our people that show up will be running the group, because I'll be at the festival, and Jason will be playing that night. So I have one of our folks running it for us while we're both not there Saturday, and gonna be cleaning up West High Street down by the Lions Club. And happy Fourth, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Barry?
All right, lots have been hit. Okay. Happy retirement to Brenda. Scott, gonna just echo what everybody else said, very sad to see you go, but I know that it's a better opportunity for you, so I'm happy for you, but I'm sad for us. I will just leave it at that. Firefighters versus police baseball game. Can we please schedule not, not during a council meeting, so maybe we can go, please, as a beg for next year, so I can actually attend?
They don't have any say in that, do you?
Well, I'm just gonna lobby for whoever does schedule this, please. Don't do it, yeah, please don't do it during our meetings, because I feel like I miss a lot, because we're in these chambers, unfortunately. No stories, I'm excited to see what you do with the space, happy to have you guys stay in Summersworth. I know you could've gone, and you chose to stay, so very happy you guys are staying with us, and we look forward to seeing what you do. Let's see. Congratulations to Michelle Mears as well for her planning award. Let's see. One thing I did hear tonight that perked up my ears, and I hope it perked up maybe a few other members, I don't know if it would go to a committee or not, that we have a plaza business owner that was actually interested in maybe having an association or a committee about parking and facade, where maybe the city might be able to take some of that burden off of us and get other people involved with that, as we look to stewards of that area as well, with those fees and plowing and other things. So I hope others heard that as well. And I know that there can be some contention with us as well as the school board, I'm hoping things can get better. I'm going to hope that maybe I can charge the new city manager to also look into that, to have good communication, so we can be aware of how things are going, where they're going to, you know, if there is funds at the end of the year, like, you know, what would we like to see all, from all sides? I think we can do better is communication, but also just relations between all of our boards. And I will leave it there.
Thank you. That brings us to item 19, which is future agenda items. I have wayfinding signs going to economic development. I've got Rocky Hill Road being looked at by Public Works, and as mayor, I will investigate the validity of a commission for the plaza. Anything else I missed? All right, great. Brings us to 20, which is non-public, we have none. 21 is adjournment. Councilor Vincent moves the city council to stand adjournment until the next regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by Councilor Gibson. Question for the council is adjournment. If you're in favor, you'll say by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll say by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.